Yeah, our names only.
Yeah, that's the conference.
A lot of people abstaining, it's the conference in AC.
Just our names only.
Good job, guys. Thanks for making my list.
I'm 49.
It's gonna get crazy at once if we move the whole thing.
I take some part notes at best.
Don't use bullets or sentences.
Mr. McConney, are we ready?
Yeah.
Ready to go? I'd like to call the regularly scheduled meeting of the Clifton Board of Education for Thursday, the 25th of August, 2023, to order. If you'd all please rise for a salute to our flag, followed by a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Abidraboh.
Here.
Mr. Awad.
Ms. Basford.
Here.
Mr. Runziak.
Here.
Mr. Mejia.
Here.
Mr. Paris.
Here.
Mrs. Santiago.
Vice President Danny.
President Smith.
Here.
We have a call.
Mr. Awad had informed me that he was not feeling good, but he may try to make it later if he does. Vice President Danny also informed me that she's not feeling well and she will not be attending. Commissioner Santiago had a death in his family. His brother passed away, so we offer our condolences to him and to his family, so he will not be attending the meeting tonight. And our business administrator, Mr. Ussy, was not feeling well and went home, so our assistant BA, Mr. Shahada, with one bum foot, is gonna fill in and do his best, so everyone would be, to be patient with him. And things may go a little slower, but he's usually pretty much on the money, so I think that takes care of our attendance. Anybody up, wanna read mission statement? Go ahead, Alan.
The mission of the Clifton School District in an open and reciprocal community partnership is to provide all students with a quality education to develop the skills necessary to become literate, lifelong learners who are responsible and productive citizens, contributing to a democratic society in an ever-changing world.
The Open Public Meetings Act, the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, was enacted to ensure the right to the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Clifton Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be publicized by having the date, time, and place thereof posted at the city clerk's office, Clifton Public Library, Administration Building, Senior Citizen Nutrition Center, on cable TV, in the local press, on the district's website, and mailed to presidents of parent-teacher organizations. This meeting will be tape recorded in accordance with our policy 0168.
Okay, public recognition. This portion of the meeting is open to the residents and non-residents of the City of Clifton for the purposes of addressing any subject matter pertinent to and/or directly related to the operation of the Clifton Public School District. Residents and non-residents are requested, if in person, to sign the register provided for this purpose. All speakers are asked to state their names, municipality in which they live, and subject matter before speaking. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Issues raised by members of the public may or may not be responded to by the board. All comments will be considered, and a response will be forthcoming if and when appropriate. Questions may or may not be answered by board members. The board asks that members of the public be courteous and mindful of the rights of other individuals when they are speaking. Specifically, comments regarding students and employees of the board are discouraged and will not be responded to by the board. Students and employees have specific legal rights afforded by the laws of the state of New Jersey. The board bears no responsibility, nor will it be liable for any comments made by members of the public. Members of the public should consider their comments in light of the legal rights of those affected or identified in their comments, and be aware that they are legally responsible and liable for their comments. Okay, we'll start with virtual. Okay, if you could admit them.
An iPhone user in the waiting room, and a phone user.
Hello, can you hear us? You're...
We have an iPhone user in the waiting room? You're not in the waiting room anymore? You can speak now publicly at the Clifton Board of Education meeting?
Okay, do you wish to address the board? Okay, you're just here to wa, to listen to the meeting? Okay, last time, iPhone user, are you, are you here to address the board? Okay, Sam, let's move on.
Okay. Buenas noches. Hola, buenas noches. Esta, esta directo con la junta de, eh, con la reunión de la junta de directivos de, de la, eh, de Clifton Public Schools. Quería decir algo hoy.
Si usted, no. Salavant, gracias.
Ah, está bien, muchas gracias. She just received the message that was happening today. Señor, señor, a nuestro superintendente quiere saber si usted está contenta con nuestras escuelas. Señora? Hello?
Hola.
Señora, el superintendente quiere saber si usted está contenta con las escuelas de Clifton School, las escuelas públicas.
Sí.
Sí, okay. Muchas gracias. Muchas gracias a usted. Usted puede ver la reunión por el, por el website del distrito si, si quiere, okay?
Okay, gracias.
Okay, señora, buenas noches. Okay, there's, uh, no one else in the virtual?
Okay, motion to close virtual.
Motion.
By Mr. Abidraboh, second by Mr. Paris. Okay, anyone in the audience that wishes to address the board, please come up to the podium, state your name, please sign your name into the book, and you'll have five minutes.
Well, good evening to everyone. My name's Lori LaLama, and I'm the president of the Clifton Education Association. Congratulations to those running for the Board of Education. I want to remind you, the ones that are running now and the ones that will run in the future, why you are running, what you should not be doing, and what your job will be. It's important to, for all candidates to remember your motivation. Avoid conflicts of interest and focus on ensuring quality education for all of our students. Your role involves making policy decisions, allocating resources, and representing the community's interests. The purpose of running for the Board of Ed is to contribute to the improvement of the educational system here in Clifton. You aim to shape educational policies, budget for resources, and make decisions that benefit students, educators, parents, and the community as a whole. When I say educators, I mean everybody involved, all right? It's not just teachers and parents, it's custodians and security and everybody. Your goal is to ensure quality education, equal opportunities, and a positive and safe learning environment for all students. Board of Education candidates should avoid conflicts of interest, such as financial ties to educational vendors, organizations, or individuals that could influence their decision-making. You should also refrain from favoring specific schools or groups, and prioritize the overall well-being of all students in the educational system. Inclusive, candidates should avoid engaging in personal attacks, spreading false information, or using inappropriate language on social media. You should also steer clear of discussing sensitive topics without a proper understanding, as well as refraining from any behavior that might undermine the dignity of your position or create conflicts within the community. Moreover, candidates should avoid promising jobs or employment opportunities in exchange for support or votes. Your primary focus should be on advocating for quality education, transparency, and equitable policies rather than making personal offers that could compromise your integrity. Ensuring quality education for all students involves several key aspects. Equitable access, providing equal access to educational resources, facilities, and opportunities regardless of students' backgrounds, abilities, or socioeconomic status. Effective teaching, supporting your professional development for educators, implementing evidence-based teaching methods, and ensuring that educators have the necessary tools and support to excel in their roles. Curriculum excellence, which we're known for. Developing a well-rounded curriculum that covers essential subjects, fosters critical thinking, and prepares students for future challenges. Individualized support, recognizing diverse learning needs and providing specialized support for students with disabilities, learning differences, or unique circumstances. Safe and inclusive environment, creating a safe, healthy, and inclusive, respectful learning environment that promotes diversity, equity, and positive social interactions. Resource allocation, ensuring fair distribution of resources, including funding, facilities, and educational materials to prevent disparities among schools and students. Creating a physically and emotionally safe environment where students can learn and express themselves without fear of harm or discrimination. By addressing these aspects, Clifton Public Schools can work towards providing a high-quality education that meets the needs of all students and prepares them for a successful future. In order to address these aspects in education, you must work collaboratively with your different bargaining units in the district. They have the kids' best interest at heart and want them to learn in a safe environment and be successful. Do not forget, the student's learning environment is the educator's teaching environment. Why? New Jersey has the number-one public schools in the United States because we have the strongest unions to protect, to protect the students. The New Jersey Association of School Administrators, Principals and Supervisors, and the New Jersey Education Association. Collaboration between educational stakeholders, including educators and their unions, is crucial for creating a conducive environment for learning. When educators are empowered and their needs are addressed, it positively impacts students' educational experiences. Strong partnerships between unions and educational leadership can lead to effective policies, improved working conditions for educators, and ultimately better outcomes for our students. New Jersey's ranking is a testament to the positive impact of such collaboration. On public education and Clifton Public Schools, the CEA is looking forward to continued collaboration. Thank you.
President Smith, Superintendent Robertozzi, administration, board members, citizens, students that may be watching, good evening. My name is Elias Raxton, and I've come to give the same message I gave to the council, city council meeting, the most recent one. I'd like to announce the founding of the Albion Civic Association. So this is also kind of just a call to residents that may be watching. The ACA is a, basically, it's a neighborhood guild, a neighborhood association made for the citizens in the section of Albion in the City of Clifton, who'll probably engage businesses, sort of thing, hopefully host family-friendly events, and then, of course, advocate and protect the community's interests. Right now, we're working on setting up a committee, kind of like a governing board, sort of thing. We have one more position left that we're trying to fill right now. I think in the past two weeks, I've knocked on over 200 doors in the area, you know, just going up and down by the park. The stables of our community really are School 5 and Albion Park, so that's really where we've been getting really centered. That's also where we will probably have lots of our events. If you are interested, our Facebook is Albion Civic, and our email is albioncivicassociation, Again, Albion Civic is our Facebook, and it's really just a community group, kind of thing. So if you live in the Albion area and you're interested, be sure to find us. Thank you so much.
Anyone else wish to address the board? Is he not, motion to close? By Commissioner Mahia, and seconded by Commissioner Harris. I wanted to make sure I heard those voices correctly, right? Okay. Elias, I know you, you gave, representing the Civic Association.
Next week, our...
You'll, you'll be ready for that next, next meeting?
We have another speaker.
Gotcha. Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to number eight. Ms. Brigosa will make her presentation on PBSIS. Thank you. I'll do.
Thank you, President Smith, Vice President Danny, Dr. Robertosi, Central Administration, and Commissioners. Thank you, thank you, tonight. We're going to provide a summary of some wonderful events that happened last year. Now, all along the way, we've talked about staff, students, and our building-wide practices in PBSIS. And from time to time, you get to hear from us directly what we're doing as far as a district recognition, statewide recognition, and national recognition. But I'd be remiss if I didn't really put us all on this platform to share with you all the amazing things that are also going on behind the scenes. So it's a wrap-up of not an individual student or school, but a, or, or a staff member, but a collaborative of what we're doing. So the cascade of our services and impact are really impressive. We're fully functioning at the universal tier. We finished our next cohort of trained schools on secondary-tier intervention schools. Two, nine, fourteen, and high school are ready to pilot this year. And what you'll start to see in these presentations, and what you could look forward to, are highlights on those secondary-tier intervention success stories. The remaining, our last five schools will be trained this coming school year on secondary-tier interventions. Now, this is a wonderful time for us. This is the biggest push possible because we're aligning all of our intervention services, both the academic and the behavioral, making it a true multi-tiered system of support platform for our district. So, um, the next couple of slides, we've, we've divided them to talk about what we've been doing on a national platform and how we've been recognized. Clifton Public Schools is all over the map, and I'm really excited to share this with you. Some we've shared before, but others we haven't gotten a chance to chat about. The first is Mr. Jengara, Assistant Superintendent, and I had the honor of presenting last year in Chicago at the National Center on Technical Support for PBIS. Sidebar, our stuff is so good, we were, we were invited to come back out this Sept- this October. So, um, that was amazing. We also, just yesterday, Mrs. Kuzilevich, Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Instruction, and myself, were a part of a panel on the National Center on Safe and Supportive Learning Environments, and we got to share our story on how we're supporting our students, staff, and community on social, emotional, behavioral interventions in our district. 2023 also saw Mr. Jengara and I do a podcast series on the Educator's Blueprint for Missouri School-Wide Positive Behavior Support. We're super excited to share this with you all because it's because of your support in our central office, and more importantly, our staff and students, that we're able to do this as a community together. Some statewide recognition, just to shout us out a little bit. Our, in New Jersey, we have NJPBSIS, right? That's our network of schools that we, that, that have trained us and that are recognized in partnership with the Department of Education to bring positive behavior support in schools. Well, they highlighted our efforts, particularly in their conference in the last spring at the Leadership Forum. You all saw the posters at one of the meetings at the high school, so that was really impressive. But what was also cool was that their keynote speaker, which was the School Climate Transformation Project out of Rutgers, they were the keynote speakers. And we did a pretty cool thing last year. Dr. Robertosi signed us up, our fearless leader, to pilot the NJSky climate surveys for the Department of Education, paired with these folks. And they identified, they asked us to highlight our, our rollout, district-wide rollout of that climate platform. Amazing. Four, one, two, three, five of our schools were presenters. Those were the posters that you saw. We were also recognized. Every single one of our schools that are implementing the universal tier were showcased and highlighted at this forum because we're implementing at above 70%, which is the national average. Now, all of our schools are, at a minimum, 80% or higher, which is, it's amazing. And that's the universal tier. So, as we talk about the systems further down the line next year, I hope to bring you news of how we're implementing our secondary and later on, our tertiary tiers of support at this magnitude. We were also asked to present to our fellow New Jersey school districts at the Community of Practice Forum for NJPBSIS, where once again, we were asked to showcase our district-wide implementation efforts. Next up, we have our district accolades. I feel so fortunate, and I say this with, with truly from the bottom of my heart, to be able to stand here in front of you every month. And yes, the meetings are long, and sometimes, you know, I kind of like, my blood sugar drops and my eyes kind of start to close closer to 10:00 p.m. But I feel so honored to be able to showcase our staff, students, and what we're doing, so thank you for that. We hosted other delegations from Garfield School District. They wanted to come and see what we were doing. At Administrator Academy, we presented what we're doing as well. By the way, Admin Academy is amazing, and I can't say enough. And how many people outside of our district are asking us how we're doing that? How did that get started? Because it's just, it's just pretty cool that we have that available. And I saw many of you out this past school year at community outreach pieces. We, we joined the Bunny Bash, the Tang Pole, and we partnered with the Clifton Public Library. If you know of any event that you think would be great for us to promote what we're doing and promote PBSIS in homes, to show parents a little bit what that could look like, please let us know. We'd be more than happy to, to attend. I want to thank you for your time today, and as always, for your, your dedication and your ongoing support. Thank you.
Ms. Brigosa, I was, I happened to be in Mr. Jengara's office two days ago when you and Janina were both on that podcast. And it's just, it's just amazing how we are, because of you and your efforts, that we are getting recognized nationally. And it was just really neat to see that on that, that podcast. So, congratulations to you and Ms. Kuzilevich. It's great to see Clifton, people asking Clifton how to do things. So it's a credit to both of you for the great work you do, so thank you. It was really neat to see that. Okay, I'm just gonna skip to fourteen, so Mr. Doctor could do his presentation. I'm sorry?
Dr. Robertosi, members of the Central Administration, President Smith, Commissioners of the Board of Education. As the Anti-Bullying Coordinator for the School District of Clifton, it's my job to, twice a year, come before you and present our figures for, at this point, Period Two, the second half of the 2223 school year, and the yearly totals, along with some additional information for our SSDS reporting. We have to report to the state of New Jersey all of our violence, vandalism, and substance abuse cases, as well as our bullying cases, our HIB cases. And we have some new portions that we have to report as well. So as I said, this is going to be for Period Two, which runs from January 1st to June 30th. But earlier in the year, we also reported the Period One, which runs from September 1st and July 1st for HIBs trainings and programs, all the way through December 31st. As I mentioned, these are two parts. One is our VVSA, Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse, and the other is our harassment, intimidation, and bullying numbers. For those of you who may not know, VVSA, Violence, Vandalism, and Substance Abuse, deals with pretty much just that. Anything from assaults, fights, theft, all the way to weapons charges and sexual assault, robbery. And as you can see, our numbers from the previous year have dropped in nearly every section of our district. Our elementary schools basically went down from nineteen in 2122, all the way down to six cases of violence, vandalism, and substance abuse. That's a substantial drop from one year to the next. And a lot of it has been tied to PBSIS, work that our counselors and our staff and our administration has done in each of these buildings. Christopher Columbus, you can also see, has had a tremendous drop from eighty-three cases a year ago, down to forty-seven this past year. Woodrow Wilson Middle School has also had a decline, and Clifton High School has pretty much stayed right where they are. And with a building that large, that's not, not too surprising. For HIBs, as I mentioned, harassment, intimidation, bullying, I'm the person in the district that, when a parent is unhappy with what the results are from a HIB investigation, they call me. And one of the things that we explain to parents is that there are two things that determine if something is deemed a HIB by state levels. Now, we might think that picking on someone is bullying, which it definitely can be and would be handled by the Code of Conduct, but in order to be deemed bullying by the state of New Jersey and by all of the districts, it has to reach two parts of criteria. First part is distinguishable characteristic. There has to be some reason why someone is being picked on. Some examples would be race, color, religion, ethnicity, sexual orientation, and disability, along with several others. The other part that has to be met is that there's a substantial disruption. You can call somebody something, call them a bad name, call them a terrible name. But if the other person doesn't really care, doesn't bother them, it doesn't upset them, it may be bad, it may be something that's disciplineable with the Code of Conduct, however, it wouldn't be considered a HIB because there's not that substantial disruption. Some substantial disruptions that we look for is child missing school, do they not want to go to class? Are they changing how they do things? Are they trying to avoid someone? Are they becoming withdrawn? Are they changing their eating and sleeping habits? Things like that would show us that there was a substantial disruption. And you can see from previous year, our confirmed cases from one year to the next have dropped. The elementary school have basically been cut in half. Our numbers at Christopher Columbus Middle School, again, our confirmed cases are pretty much about half of our alleged cases, and stayed pretty much the same at Christopher Columbus. There's a big drop at Woodrow this past year. They went from twenty-four confirmed cases in 2122, all the way down to eight in 2223. And the high school had a tiny bit of an uptick, but their numbers are usually very, very low. You could see from 2122, there were zero confirmed cases and seven alleged cases. As the former principal of the building, I can tell you that even though we're such a large building, you would imagine that HIB cases would be astronomical at a building like that. They really aren't. A lot of that is testament to the students that we have and the situations that occur, and how our administration and our staff handles those. It also lends itself to the age group. They handle things a little bit differently. They're a little bit more manageable with things, and things become conflicts very easily because it's not one person picking on another, it's, it's back and forth. So we see our numbers a little bit lower at the high school level, usually. Two new things that are being reported, both to the state and to you as well. First would be preliminary determination. When a principal or anti-bullying specialist in a building gets a case for bullying, an alleged case, they look at it, they review it, they look to see if it meets a criteria from just the facts of the case, taking everything to account that they have in front of them. If they believe that it doesn't reach that point or that it's a Code of Conduct violation and doesn't meet the state's criteria for harassment, intimidation, and bullying, that can be moved ahead. And it's called a preliminary determination. We notify the parents of the alleged offender and of the alleged victim that this was brought to us, that we are investigating it, and that it will be handled possibly with a Code of Conduct violation, but that does not reach the level of harassment, intimidation, or bullying. This past year was our first year utilizing this, and it cut our caseload by thirty-five throughout the district. In order for that to go through, it not only has to be reviewed by the school, but I have to review every case and sign off on all of them. Another aspect that has to be reported, and I'm making this report because it's part of the SSDS, doesn't actually come through my office when, when we deal with it, would be restraint and seclusion. A lot of times, this is our special needs population, and it can also lend itself to physical altercations. Again, this is the first time that we have to officially submit this to the state. Our incidence of restraint and seclusion at the high school were three. Christopher Columbus, one. Woodrow Wilson Middle School, two, and elementary and preschool, eleven. In order for our staff and our students to understand and handle cases of harassment, intimidation, and bullying, we provide trainings and programs for them. Some programs would be Week of Respect, PBSIS. Trainings would be everything that leads into those programs. And right here is just a report of how many trainings and programs the different schools accomplished in both Period Two and for the year. And our numbers are commensurate with what we usually have for each of the schools. Last portion of this is the school self-assessment. There is a document put out by the state where each individual school gets to score themselves. So you imagine that out of a perfect score, every school is getting a perfect score. They're not, and they know that. And they need to look at this very closely and pick apart each element and make sure that they are reaching the highest level. And you could see that we don't just give ourselves perfect scores. The buildings each look at this and score themselves, and then I review all of their documentation and make sure that their scores are accurate. And for the most part, everyone does score themselves accurately, and sometimes are even a little too tough on themselves. And I may bump up their score a little bit because I know that they've actually done more than their reporting. And you could see that from last year, 2122 to 2223, we've had an increase, a substantial increase, in nearly every school. And part of that is because we've been more proactive with giving them the information they need to meet this criteria, so they're looking at that from day one of school. And finally, from our areas of improvement, we plan to have continued collaboration with the building principals and anti-bullying specialists in each building to identify trends and coordinate trainings and programs for our students and staff that meet those trends. We have focused professional development program that's going to be completed by all staff. District-wide implementation of PBSIS is continuing, and then a regular review of the Code of Conduct and Discipline Matrix. Any questions?
Any Board members have any questions?
Any board members have any questions? Nope, thank you, Mr. Doctor. Appreciate your very thorough report. Mr. Doctor, when's the second, when you have to do the second one?
We'll do that in January.
January?
January's meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let me go back up, we already skipped here. All right, we'll go back to number nine, adoption of minutes of the June 22nd meeting.
Motion.
Second.
By Mr. Abadrabo, second by Ms. Basford. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Abadrabo?
I'm standing.
Ms. Basford?
Yes.
Mr. Bruntzak?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Mr. Paris?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes.
I'm sorry, Vice President Danny, I skipped her.
Let your slide. Adoption, number 10, adoption of the minutes for July 27th meeting.
Motion.
Second.
By Mr. Abadrabo, second by Ms. Basford. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Abadrabo?
Yes.
Ms. Basford?
Yes.
Mr. Bruntzak?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Mr. Paris?
Yes.
Vice President Danny?
Yes.
President Smith?
All right, next we'll go to number 11, superintendent's report, Dr. Robitowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, board members, members of the community, students, faculty, staff, and attendants. It's great to be here with you tonight. It's nice to see you. I have some good news to share to start off. We like good news. So every three years, in the state of New Jersey, school districts are evaluated by the New Jersey Department of Education through a process called CUSAC, which stands for Quality Single Accountability Continuum. Basically, it's the state's report card for each school district. So this past year, our district was CUSACT, which is a verb that I made up. And it's, there's a lot of work that goes into being evaluated by the state. People from the state, particularly from the county office of education, come to our district and visit our schools, ask to see certain documents, want to see certain reports, and verify that we're doing all the things that we say that we are doing. And the district is evaluated in five key areas. Those areas, based on research, are areas that are known to be ineffective school districts. So those areas are instruction and program, fiscal, finance, governance, which is you guys, operations, and personnel. And we were CUSAC months ago. We didn't get any results. And today, out of the blue, I received an email from the state of New Jersey, addressed to me, informing me that the Clifton Public School District has been identified as a high-performing school district by the state of New Jersey. And that is something to be proud of, that is something to clap for. In order to be designated a high-performing district, you have to score above 80% in each of those five categories. So I'll review the scores for you without getting into too much details. But in fiscal management, 100%. Nice. And you'll see a resolution on the agenda later on that talks about the district was recognized for the ASBO International Certificate of Excellence Certification, which means we do really well with our finances. And that's a credit to our BA and our assistant BA, his entire staff, and this board, whose, one of their primary responsibilities is to oversee finances. So that's fantastic. Governance, that's your job. So the state comes in and they want to see, did you evaluate the superintendent? Yes, you did. Here it is. Do you update policies regularly? Yes, you do. I mean, and there's a whole list of other things. I'm proud to say that you scored 100%. Operations, these are things like, do we send the proper reports to the state on time? Do we have the appropriate data files? When a student goes on home instruction, does the home instructor, does it happen within a certain amount of time? All those things. And I'm proud to say, in that regard, we scored 100%. Personnel, we scored 97%. The area that we lost three points on, it was an area which I may choose to dispute, because it's, doesn't really make much sense, but 97 is a 97, so I may just let it go. But basically, it dealt with the amount of time it takes us to enroll a new employee in the, what is it called, Janina, this system?
The New Jersey Certification Program is NJPIR.
PLMS. PLMS. So we have to enroll new teachers in this program. And that's where they get a mentor, right? They get their certificate. But what happens is, sometimes we will hire a teacher as a leave replacement. And then we hire them full-time. And it looks to the state like we should have placed them in that program and we hired them as a leave replacement. And, which, we can't. They won't allow you to. But now we're getting penalized, because then we hire that person as a full-time teacher, and it'll look like their start date, they should have been enrolled in that program, and they weren't. So it's kind of a silly kind of thing, so I... Right, is that kind of the gist of it? Is it worth fighting? Not really. We'll fix it. And then there's instruction and program. Okay, so this is the one that, to be very honest with you, we're always afraid of. Because the primary score is done before the people come into the building to see us. Because it's based on your standardized test scores. It's based on student test scores. So what we knew, and listen, there's no, we're not ashamed to say, we regularly report our test scores. We know there are areas we're doing well. We know there are areas where we need improvement. Our test scores aren't fabulous. But we're getting better and we're improving. So before the state even came in, we were at 82%. All right? So that means, just based on our test scores, we're at 82%. But then they come in, and they do all the other checks. They check your curriculum, make sure that your curriculum is aligned to the standards, make sure that the board has approved your curriculum, make sure, hundred, list of hundreds of other things. And in that regard, we scored 82%, which was the highest we could have gotten based on our test scores. So to be designated a high-performing district is our report card. That's a testament to the administration, to the board, to our outstanding staff. And I want to congratulate all of you, and especially a big thank you to Ms. Kusalevich, who really leads the charge on CUSAC for most of it. So thank you, Janina, for always being outstanding. I'd like to update the board on summer registration. We've registered nearly 1,100 students since July 1st. That's correct, 1,100 students since July 1st. We currently have around 300 students at some level of the registration process, and we still have a week and a half for school starts. And some people don't realize that. It's like the day before school starts, and they realize, oh, we have to go register our kids for school, and then the line's at the door. But thankfully, Mr. Doctor, who is in charge of our student registration, has created a process by which it's become very, very efficient. Pre-K registration concluded on July 31st, as the spots were nearly filled. However, those who registered prior to July 31st were put on a waiting list in case openings arise. Pre-K, ladies and gentlemen, is not guaranteed. Okay? It's based on need and the availability that we have, based on the state aid that we get. And we do not, correct me if I'm wrong, we do not utilize any local monies for pre-K. It's all expansion, state aid. We do not use local money for pre-K. As you will hear later in committee minutes, our domicile investigative staff has been very busy this summer. These are the people who check residency. And, you know, when we did our budget this year, we spent a lot of time talking about how much money we spend, how much tuition we spend on charter schools. And so when we get the charter school bills, they'll send us a bill and say, you owe us this amount of money, this is the tuition, and it'll give us the list of students. I know before I got here that that bill was just paid. Now, we actually look at the list, make sure the students' ours, meaning that they live in Clifton, go to the house to make sure they live there, and then pay the bill. By doing that this year, we saved the district over $350,000 in tuition, not that we didn't pay, that we told them, we got your bill, but your bill's wrong, because these students are not ours. So bill passeic, bill wane, or wherever the students live. That's because I have great staff. And they care about the taxpayer, they care about the money that we spend. That's not money that you would ever know about if I didn't tell you. But it's important that, it's important that you hear that, because that is real money. Finally, I'd like to give a referendum update. This summer has been a doozy, to say the least. We have construction going on in almost every building. And if you were to walk into any of our buildings mid-July, it would have looked like they were vandalized. It would have looked like bombs went off, because it was just chaos. But as anyone who's ever had any kind of remodeling or renovation done in your own home, you know that things don't always go as planned. You know, you take down a wall, and there's a pipe there that's not supposed to be there, and then the plans have to change, and things like that. And that causes delays. But despite that, I'm happy to report tonight, and I want to assure the board and the community, because I hear things, that we are on time with all of our projects. We will be opening school on September 6th for in-person instruction, contrary to any other rumors you may or may not hear. A good majority of our buildings could open next week if we had to. But many of our sites are still open construction sites. There was one issue that came to my attention today, that it was on social media. And I don't like to address social media. I think social media will be the end of our civilization. But I got so many calls on it that I just want to speak publicly about it. Because it's not a secret, we've actually spoken about it publicly before. In June, we knew, when construction started at the end of June, at school one, when they started to renovate the bathrooms and they removed the floors, they found that many of the steel beams in the bathrooms, the structures were not stable enough, they were corroded, and it just needed to be replaced. That's one of those things that you don't plan for on a timeline. But we knew that at the end of June. We talked about that at a facilities committee meeting. And we said then that it's very likely that the school year may have to start off with luxury portable restrooms outside the building for a few weeks. I know that was said at the meeting. I know it was said and read publicly at this meeting. That is only for school one. There are no other schools that will have any portable restrooms. And it will be a very, very temporary solution, we believe, at the most, the month of September, barring any unforeseen circumstances, right? So don't hold me till September 30th if it's a week later, right? But we believe it's only going to be for the month of September. Now, I will tell you this. I'm not joking when I say luxury portable bathrooms. You would want these in your house. They're that nice. I understand some of the concerns, well, the kids have to go outside to go to the bathroom. Yeah, guys, that's why you have administration to think of these things, and to figure out a plan. So we have a plan in place. We have, we're going to have the area canopyed to protect the staff and students from the weather. We're going to have a security personnel assigned outside, just to the bathrooms. The principal and administrative staff and the teachers will have procedures for when and how to use the bathroom. It's, instead of going down the hallway to the bathroom, they're going to go out the door to the bathroom under a canopy and go outside. Is it the ideal situation? No. But do we not want to open school for a month? So anyway, I don't like to, if somebody has a question, send us an email, right? One of us will, if you send it to a board member, they'll most likely forward it to me, and I will get the answer. But the social media stuff is just, it starts issues that don't need to, need to be issues. Like, so the, you know, the biggest thing was, the principal of school 13 today had to call me and say, they're telling me... I said, who's telling you? Well, Facebook. They're telling me I'm going to have portable bathrooms. You're not going to have portable bathrooms. Oh, no, you're wrong, because Facebook says it, so it must be true. So anyway, I'm making light of it, but social media is not the best thing. So does anybody have any questions about that, by the way?
It came to me, so I have to.
Yeah.
I flipped it to you too, as well, and I asked you, and you answered my questions today. I know you're going to have a security guard, is it going to be male or female? If the security, like, who's going to be the attendants inside these? I've never seen them, so I don't know what they look like inside. Are they going to...
Well, to be very honest with you, Ms. Basford, if it was a regular inside bathroom, the students, the students will go in by themselves. Like, a teacher obviously can go in there if there's an issue. But there's not going to be an adult monitoring inside. We don't, we wouldn't have that in...
No, no, I understand. I think, what I misspoke, will there be a changing of the guard? Like, when the guard has to go on lunch break, or...
Oh, yes.
Daybreak?
Yeah, we have, we have...
We're going to have full-time coverage?
We have plans in place. It will be 100% covered. And listen, you know, no plan is foolproof.
No.
We'll adapt and adjust if things need to change. But I'm confident in the plan we have. I'm confident in the administration putting forth that plan. And our teachers are resilient. Our teachers, no matter what you throw at our teachers, they figure it out. Yeah, nobody's going to be happy about it. But our teachers will do whatever they got to do to keep their kids safe, and to, you know, to get it done.
And I have one other thing, you said the end of September, the people were worried about that it was going to get delayed, and it would be during the colder months. That was the other issue.
I really, it's barring, I did put that caveat out there, barring anything unforeseen. But I'm being conservative when I tell you, October, we should be good. Over the next week and a half, we will have cleanup crews roving the district. That's one of the biggest issues, is that, you know, there was so much work done this summer that the buildings were filthy. But again, that's why you have administration to come up with a plan for that. And I just happen to have some great people around me who think about things before I even have to worry about them, including our director of buildings and grounds, Eddie Maldonado, and our two supervisors, supervisor custodians, Sean Smith, and supervisor maintenance, Mo Kapasi. They've gone above and beyond in every aspect, dealing with this, dealing with all of the work we have going on. And kudos to our assistant BA, Mitch Shihada, who is on everything, every single day. And his always, always number one goal is to make sure the district looks good. So thank you, Amit. That's my report for tonight, ladies and gentlemen. I'll be happy to answer any other questions. But, you know, anybody tells you a school's not opening, we're opening, and it's going to be beautiful.
I have a question about CUSAC. Do you know what we scored last year by any chance, or the last session?
The last time was my first one, and we were high-performing. Don't remember the numbers exactly, though, Judy, but we were high-performing. Facilities is in, under... Oh, okay. That's true, that's a good point. So, yeah, it is under fiscal management, but facilities falls under that, because that falls under the BA's office, so that's part of the 100. So the county office comes out here, visits... So the county office comes out here, visits, we don't know where they're going to go, they don't visit every building, but they come out, and we don't know where they're going to go, and they come in, they, uh, check buildings, so, that, that hundred percent in fiscal also includes our buildings, maintenance and stuff, so, you, you all should be very proud of that.
Could you, um, could you get us the, um, let's say the last three, um, scores? Um, I know the first, I know the first one is when you started.
I'm not going to put her on the spot, but I bet you Janina knows it off the top of her head.
They're, they're very close, and I'll have them for you.
But before.
No, beforehand.
Three ago, we, we were not high performing.
Yeah, that's.
Then we were, and the last two were high performing, right?
But, but that was only because there was an, that was a very long.
We weren't at a hundred percent in the majority of the areas, though, there was a, and I had presented about this three times ago, we lost the majority of our points in curriculum and instruction because the person who came in to evaluate us at the time had put in, there was a misnumbered section in the, in a science standard, and a misnumbered section in one out of one hundred and eighty-seven guides in world languages, and as a result, we lost all of our points in curriculum.
Okay, just curious to see, um, again, not to put, uh, keep giving him a pat on, on the back, but, you know, the board brought Dr. Robitose in for a reason, and that just showed you that. Um, and he can't do it alone. His staff is all part of that, the board working together is all part of that. Just so the public knows, there's a, there are, um, courses that board members have to take to keep themselves current, and if the board does not complete those courses, that will affect our CUSAC. So, it's extremely important, and board members know that, that that's their responsibility. I have to tell you that I attended, um, at our convention last year and spoke to other board presidents, they didn't even know that they should be taking these courses, they didn't know that they were even required. That's happening in other districts in the state of New Jersey, it's not happening in And it's not happening because, again, going back to our slogan, One Clifton, none of this can be accomplished by one group, it has to be all of us working together. And I think under Dr. Robitose's leadership, we've done a pretty darn good job working together and accomplishing those, uh, those things, so, Clifton should be proud, Clifton should be proud, and, and we are extremely proud of our staff and our central administration for, for proving, which we already knew. So, again, thank you, Dr. Robitose, to, uh, your staff, and to, um, uh, Ms. La Lama, to all the, the teaching staff, and, you know, everyone down the line. None of this could be accomplished if we weren't all working together. So, congratulations on a fantastic report, and I'm just curious to see, uh, what the scores were before you came. So, we'll move on, thank you. Uh, we'll move to thirteen. All right, we have first reading of, uh, policy, Ms. Bassler, you just want to read them for the public?
Sure. Um, oh, zero, zero, one, four, five, Board Member Resignation and Removal, one, six, four, two, point, oh, one, sick leave, two, four, one, five, point, five, oh, um, School Four Title, School Parent and Family Engagement, two, four, one, five, point, five, one, School Eleven Title, School, um, School Parent and Family Engagement, two, five, two, four, one, five, point, four, two, School Twelve, School Thirteen, School Fourteen, School Fifteen, and School Seventeen, School Parent and Family Engagement, two, five, one, five, point, five, seven, C, CCMS Title One, School Parent and Family Engagement, two, four, one, four, one, nine, I'm sorry, two, four, one, nine, I'm in a lot of pain right now, um, School Threat Assessment, um, I'm sorry.
I don't know, I took a lot of that. Do we know, could you, but, why are there not, why are all the schools not there?
Because they're Title One schools.
Oh, just the, okay, I'm sorry.
These are all the Title One schools, yes.
I got you, yep, I see it. Any question, well, actually, that's first reading. Any questions? All right, we'll go on to, um, Board Committee Reports. Mr. Paris, would you mind, uh, doing Facilities, please?
Sure. Uh, the Facilities Committee met on August ninth, uh, in attendance was myself, Mr. Jengaro, uh, Mr. Maldonado, Mr. Doctor, Mr. Marchionne, uh, Mr. Kapashi, and we had, uh, guests in attendance, Mr. Costello, Mr. Watkins, Mr. Lovito, and Mr. Ganchi. Uh, we started our meeting at three thirty, we ended at four fifty. Uh, items of, on discussion were the referendum update, uh, we got a review from the Epic Rep, uh, of what's taken place so far in the referendum, and what's taking place throughout the rest of the year. Uh, we discussed the baseball field, uh, electrical, that's still in process, uh, was it expected to be completed until the middle of this month due to PSENG permits? Um, I believe we're very close to, uh, getting some power to the fieldhouse there. Uh, bathrooms will be operable for graduation. Um, building and ground updates, administration gave an update of projects taking place throughout the district. Uh, donated Mustangs were delivered and installed, uh, paving took place at two schools with new parking patterns, cooking kitchens at Woodrow and Columbus are near completion, uh, tiles and color scheme will be similar to the CH, to CHS for uniformity. Stucco was, uh, removed at School Thirteen and being replaced, making great progress there. Um, request to rent the CHS parking lot, uh, came from Brighton Asylum, uh, they explained, uh, the parking process that they are looking, uh, to accomplish the CHS, and if the board allows the use of the parking lot, uh, the, uh, management there gave an in-depth explanation as to how that process will work. Um, number four, embrace relief, a mobile food pantry that now provides fresh produce to families in collaboration with the Health Department in notifying the families in need. Um, we discussed the, uh, music suite update, an estimate was given by our, by our architects, uh, between one point seven and two million, and the School Fourteen parking lot, uh, the parking lot is complete, repaving, uh, an older lot was completed, a new traffic pattern, uh, will be proposed by building administration. Meeting concluded at four fifty.
Okay, any questions?
Yeah, I have two, I'm sorry. Um, the two schools that have new parking, um, traffic patterns, which, I know you said fourteen, but what's the other school? Paving taking place at two schools with new parking patterns, that was under two A, number two.
Who was the other one?
No, the other one.
We paved, uh, School Thirteen as well.
Okay, and you're changing the parking pattern?
No, we just, uh.
Okay.
Repaved, uh, and then repainted the lines.
Okay, so it's only one. And the other one was, um, when, uh, because I know we had talked about the, um, parking lot rental for the Brighton Asylum, uh, policy, this came up, are they going to, um, my question is, are they going to have a parking attendant there to make sure that rules are followed? And who set the price of the, of the rental?
I can, I can answer that.
Okay.
Um, we, we set the price of the rental.
Okay.
Uh, it's still in negotiation with, we haven't presented it to them yet.
Okay.
Um, our security, the owner there, it was open to basically anything we want to do, whether they provide their own security or they use ours, um, I think our preference is to use ours, if at all possible, uh, so they would be somebody from our, uh, Security Department managing the lot, any, during the operation time.
And we also talked in policy about a maintenance, maybe, uh, custodial staff member, because people come with stuff, they drop stuff, and, we, we were concerned about that as well.
Yes. Mr. Jengaro's going to update us in.
Okay.
Executive on that, since it's a contract matter.
All right, thank you.
He has it all prepared for.
But, um, we did address that in policy with one, then we do rentals, thank you.
Any other questions? It'll come back to me on, uh, the first part of what you said, um, I'll come back to Mr. Brunsiak, would you do Finance, please?
The Finance Committee met on August ninth, uh, myself, Commissioner Paris, uh, Mr. Jengaro, Mr. Shahada, Mr. Doctor, uh, Mr. Di Stefano, and Mr. Shagawat was there as well. Items of discussion, N27 Energy Presentation presented different options to the board can, that can utilize to save money after ref, after the referendum is complete. The committee agreed to have them proceed to the next steps. Special Olympics, discussion ensued about Special Olympics logistics, committee agreed to waive the fee. Uh, I'm going to move around over here a little bit, legacy acoustic shells, CHS, CHS Administration and Band Team wanted to purchase the equipment to enhance the sound during the performances, uh, the expected life, the expect, the life expectancy of this is, is a, is a probably around two decades or three decades, so, uh, the committee agreed to purchase this. Band room, estimate was given by the ar, architect of one point seven to two million dollars, committee agreed to have the architect proceed to the next steps. And finally, I want to give a big shout out to our Business Office, as Dr. Robert Tozzi referenced previously, they received the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting for Fiscal Year 2022 Annual Comprehensive Financial Report, and the Business Office received the coveted award for the best financial practices, and this award represents a significant achievement and reflects their commitment to transparency and high-quality financial reporting. So this is out of the, five out of the last six years, the Business Office has obtained this, and I think we should give them a big shout out and a round of applause to the Business Office for what they have done.
Okay, any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Brunsiak. Um, yeah, just going back to the, um, just going back to the Facilities Report, um, I just want to make no, uh, notice of it, it's my, excuse me, I just wanted to, uh, make notice of it, um, a local law firm in town, Cordina and Papa, uh, they have been so gracious to, uh, donate a, uh, very large structure of a Mustang, uh, the first one was at the high school, and, uh, the other two have been installed at, at Woodrow, um, and Columbus, so, uh, they look great, and, uh, we're very thankful to Cordina and Papa for their donation, so, uh, I just wanted to mention that in the, uh, Facilities. Okay, let's move on to, um, actually, we'll do Policy first, Ms. Bassler?
Sure. Um, good evening, the Policy Committee met on August fourteenth, we started at five oh six PM. In attendance was President Smith, Commissioner Fahim Al-Badrabo, Commissioner Richard Mahia, myself, from Administration was Dr. Danny Robitose, Mark Jengaro, Lou Ross, and also present was our new Board Attorney Maggie Miller. Uh, the committee remo, reviewed the amended changes to proposed policy two, four, one, nine, School Threat Assessment Teams, as recommended by Strauss Ismay since our last board meeting. The changes are made to incorporate the details of guidance issued by the DOE on July nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. The committee recommends the adoption of this policy. The committee, uh, reviewed a new, um, proposed policy from Strauss Ismay, one, six, four, two, oh, one, sick leave. This is to address and incorporate into our policies the requirements of sick leave for school district employees pursuant to a new law which took effect on July third, two thousand and twenty-three. The committee recommends the adoption of this policy. Regarding these two policy, the committee recommends that the board suspends Bylaw Zero One Three One and adopt the revised policy two, four, one, nine, and new policy one, six, four, two, oh, one, with one reading, based on recently approved sick leave legislation that is effective immediately and recent New Jersey Department of Education guidance provided to school districts that is effective on September one, two thousand and twenty-three. Bylaw oh, one, four, five, Board Member Resignation and Removal was reviewed by the committee. In order to clarify, when a board member may be removed for missing meetings, it is recommended that the sentence after number six be amended to read as follows. A board member who fails to attend three consecutive regular board meetings without good cause may be removed from office on the affirmative votes by the majority of the remaining board members, providing that. Um, there's a policy that everybody got, did everybody get it, or, I want to make sure everybody got the policy. The committee discussed the bylaw regarding commissioners attending meetings virtually, Board Attorney Ms. Miller will review the policy and make any recommendations at our next committee meeting. For informational purposes, the length of time of a commissioner comments were discussed without any recommendations to change the bylaw. The meeting adjourned at four, um, five forty-five PM, and Mr. Ross wrote the, uh, minutes for us, and he submitted them. Any questions? I, I just want to add that, um, Ms. Miller did some work to the committee, and she sent everybody the, um, the updated verbiage, and we'll discuss that at our next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Residency and security, um, I'll just read this on behalf of Mr. Santiago. Present at the, uh, meeting was Assistant Superintendent, uh, Jengaro, um, Director of Operations, Student Services, Michael Doctor, and, uh, Director of District Safety and Security, uh, Ms. Megan Zanola, uh, from the Board of Education, Mr. Santiago as chairman, uh, Mr. Brunsiak, and myself. The Residency Security met on August seventeenth, um, Mr. Doctor started the meeting with an update on registrations, he, uh, said there's approximately two hundred and sixty students, uh, in the pre-registration process for gate, grades K through twelve, uh, the registrations are in various levels of progress with regular and special needs. There are approximately eighty students in our pre-registration programs, and the remaining spots for pre-K will be filled by these, uh, registrants. Mr. Doctor briefed the Committee on Residency Investigations, um, through July and August, they found sixteen charter school students who did not reside in Clifton, uh, resulting in approximately two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars savings back to the district. In addition, from regular investigations, five additional non-residents were found at a savings of about eighty-three thousand dollars. That is a total savings to the district in the area of three hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars. Uh, Mr. Jengaro explained the emergency drills, uh, continue through the summer for all buildings where programs were involving students occurring, uh, drills were completed and conducted appropriately. He also explained that a meeting was held between the school district, Clifton Police Department, and the city to discuss traffic issues at some of the district schools. Two specific issues were Clifton High School and CLB. Uh, bus entrance to the high school property will be rerouted this year to keep the large buses from driving through nearby neighborhoods. Um, issues at CLB, several aspects of the traffic issue are being addressed, including ideas on different drop-off routes, finding additional. on different drop-off routes, finding additional parking for staff off property and in streets in order to allow more space for parents. Mr. Jengaro and Ms. Zanola briefed the committee on the successful New Jersey Department of Education event that was hosted by Clifton Public Schools on July 25th. Security professionals from all over the state gathered at the Clifton High School Media Center to complete an advanced behavioral threat assessment training with speakers from the Office of School Preparedness and Emergency Planning, the Secret Service, and experts in the field of threat assessments. Ms. Zanola briefed the committee on training, which the school security specialists will be receiving, including general training received by our first group of specialists last year, along with focused training in techniques with dealing with students with special needs. In addition, she explained the assessments that our security specialists will have throughout the school year to ascertain their strengths and areas of improvement for the staff. She also explained some new security equipment available for large events and sought approval to receive specific quotes and begin the ordering process for those security items for big events. The meeting concluded at 6:06 PM. Any questions? Again, to Mr. Doctor, to your residency investigators, and to your entire staff, bringing $315,000 back to our district. Money that is our money, and without those investigations, we wouldn't have it. So we appreciate that and all the hard work that you continue to do with residency and security.
President Smith?
Yes.
Seeing Chairman Santiago is not here, perhaps somebody from the Residence Committee can answer this. So for the $315,000 that we see coming back to the district for these charter schools, have we also, how are we handling non-charter schools? Any schools that we fund? Not targeting any particular schools, but what are we doing with re-registration there and trying to see if those students still live in Clifton?
Mr. Doctor could probably answer that better. Do you want to come up and answer that?
Without naming any schools, I won't.
Of course not. Each year, we do a thorough investigation of our new students. Any regular residency cases that we get internally, returned mail, things like that, we do it for any school that we send money to, without naming any schools. Any school that we send money to for tuition purposes. We also check all students who receive aid in lieu, which is transportation funding. If a student is getting, a family is getting money for transporting their child instead of us busing the child, we check those as well.
And if I may continue. So how do we work? So when we do re-registration, obviously, it's hard to do 11,000 students in one shot. So do we do, for example, this year, we're doing grades one, two, and three, next year we're doing four, five, six? Just the public understands this way. How does registration work or re-registration work or registration validation? How does that work?
We don't do re-registration or registration validation. We haven't done it since I took over a little over two years ago. What we do is we go out and check all of those students. So all of the students that go to any tech schools that we pay tuition for, any charter schools, any schools at all, we go out on all of those students. All 550 that might go to a high school nearby, all of the students that go to charter schools, anywhere where we send tuition, we go out on each and every one of those. Our own students, we do it based on, don't want to go too deep into how we check on addresses, but we do have certain techniques that we use to validate the addresses for our students. Plus, we receive tips from the public sometimes. We receive information from schools. We receive returned mail. All things like that are all investigations that we do.
Thank you.
Ms. Bassford? Yes, that includes special ed students as well?
All students.
For tuition.
All students that we pay tuition for.
Okay, and I like your answer about not to go in too deep, and you kept it secret. Thank you, Mr. Doctor.
No problem.
And to reiterate, there is no one particular school that we target. As he said, any school where we send tuition to. Because there's been some people that think we target certain schools, and that's not the case.
Not at all. It's every school.
Thank you. We'll move on. Unfinished business? Is there any unfinished business before the board? Seeing none, we'll move on to education administration. We have.
Mr. Smith, can I just make a motion to move B1 separately to suspend the bylaw? So I would make a motion to suspend bylaw 0131 and adopt policy number 2419 and 164201 in one reading, and then unsuspend the policy itself.
Got that, Mr.? All right, everyone okay with that? All right, so we're going to do, so it'll be, we'll just do a separate on EA1 with those provisions. Okay, have a motion by Ms. Bassford, second by Mr. Al Badrabo. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Al Badrabo?
Yes.
Yes, so we're compliant with statutory rules, yes.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunciak?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Mr. Paris?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. So we'll do the rest. That's EA2 through EA16.
Motion.
By Mr. Al Badrabo, second by Dr. Danny. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Al Badrabo?
Yes.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunciak?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Mr. Paris?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. All right, moving on to personnel. I'm going to do, I'm going to do, no. All right, so we have P1. We've got a lot here. I got P1 through P30, excuse me, P54.
Motion.
By Mr. Al Badrabo, second by Mr. Paris. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Al Badrabo?
Yes.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes, and I'm abstaining on my name only on number 48 and number 49.
Mr. Shahada, I apologize, I had a note here. P48, my name only.
Sir. Mr. Brunciak?
Abstain on P48, my name only, yes to everything else.
Mr. Mahia?
Abstain on 48, just my name, and yes to everything else.
Mr. Paris?
Yes, abstain on my name only in 48 and 49.
Dr. Danny?
Yes, abstain on my name only on 48 and 49, and on 49 to add the Passaic County School Board Hybrid Meeting. I'll be sending that to you.
President Smith?
Yes, abstaining on my name only on P48. Just to let the public be aware, we normally don't see that too often, but resolution where all of us are listed attending a conference, we have to abstain on our name only and approve the, we can approve the other ones, which is what we did there. So I just want everyone to be aware of that. Usually don't see that too often, but that's to attend the conference. All right, we're going to move on to financing facilities. So F11 and F12 are pulled for executive session. First one is a special ed. Actually, they're both, F11 and F12. All right, so excluding F11 and F12.
Motion.
I'm sorry. F11, F12, and there were some questions on F17 contracts, so we'll pull that for executive as well.
Motion.
Motion for the rest of the group by Mr. Al Badrabo.
Second.
Second by Ms. Bassford. Discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Mr. Al Badrabo?
Yes, with abstaining on F18. You said F17 is pulled, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Bassford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunciak?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Mr. Paris?
Yes.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
President Smith?
We'd like to congratulate Sylvia, who is here this evening as a new member of our Clifton team. If you'd like to come up and say a few words, congratulations.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Dr. Robitussi, Ms., let me read it, Kusalowicz, Mr. Jengaro, the members of the Board of Education, and my fellow supervisors for this opportunity. I also like to thank the many administrators that have guided and supported me these last 15 years. I look forward to supporting and guiding many of the talented and dedicated staff of Clifton and to continue supporting our students as well. So again, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, we're now going to move on to board, someone else here?
Oh, I didn't see you there.
Hiding in the back there.
That's Rachel Lima.
Yep.
Good evening.
Thank you, infamous.
Good evening, President Smith, Vice President Danny, Commissioners, Dr. Robitussi, Ms. Kusalevich, Mr. Jengaro, members of Central Administration, Rachel Lima. I am so happy to be here tonight, and I would like to extend my gratitude for the opportunity principal at Seal Allwood. It's an honor to serve in the Clifton Public School District, and I really appreciate and look forward to the opportunity going forward. Thank you so much.
Dr. Robitussi, you have to teach your staff, they have to sit in the front row instead of hiding in the back there.
I didn't see her all night.
Okay, we'll move on to board member comments. Mr. Al Badrabo in first next, so Mr. Awad is next, he's not here, so Ms. Bassford, you're next.
Hi, good evening. Not much tonight. Had a pleasure of meeting with some of my fellow board members. We were over at the band dedication for the field. Everything looks wonderful, the band looks very good, very, very well together. I can't see them, I can't wait to see them in a couple of weeks when they come out in their full uniform and all their glory. So congratulations to the band, and I'm glad you had a good band camp week. We shout over to the Ukrainian flag raising, just to show support. It's a day for them, but I wanted to show support. I actually saw a former worker across the field, across the lawn of City Hall. He texted me, and he goes, "I didn't know you were coming." I said, "I didn't know you were coming," so it was nice to see him, and he looks good, and he said, "Thank you." He said, "For me to convey my thanks to my fellow board members that made the journey over there to show support," because they're going through a lot right now. So that meant a lot to the community, so thank you. Thank you to the cleanup crew and everybody else that's working really hard, the construction crew, to everyone that's reached out to me and with stuff and questions. I do flip every question to the superintendent. I send them messages, and he gets them. Sometimes he responds. I know he's busy, but it's quick. His response is quick, which is, to me, is so different from what I was used to years ago, but he does take care of it, and you, people see that. What I'm trying to tell the parents is when you have a question, call the district. There's a pecking order, call the district, call the information number, leave a message, you'll get a response. It's better to call the source. I had a question about obtaining a passport. I didn't go on social media, I didn't ask anybody on social media. I called the county clerk's office, and I got the answer within seconds of what I needed because I was not sure of the information. You have a special education department, you have a general education department, call them. If you have a question about your IEP, if you have a question about your busing, call the transportation department. Please call the source. What happens is it stirs the pot, you get the wrong information from the people, you're not guided the right way. It may take a day or two for you to get an answer back, but call the source. Leave a message at your local school, people are responding, they do listen to the numbers. If you're worried about transportation, if you're worried about this, please call the source. You can email the board, I will flip it to the superintendent, I have no right to flip it to the department, I have to go to him. That's my role, I have to send it to him. If it's a board question, I will send it to Mr. Smith and Vice President Danny, President Smith and Vice President Danny, for them to handle it and disseminate it to the board. That's how our roles work, okay? I had the pleasure of talking to a new board member from another district, and they asked me, like, "How do you do this? What's your role?" Is that me, am I five minutes up? I'm five minutes up? Okay, thank you. All right, so that being said, find out your role, find out where the source is, find out the department, send an email. If you don't know, and you have to contact us, we will make sure it goes to the superintendent, and he will disseminate it to the correct department. And last but not least, to Anthony Santiago, my deepest condolences about the loss of your brother. I called you today, I left a message. I'm very sorry for your loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brunciak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everybody. I just want to give my sincerest condolences to Commissioner Santiago and his family on the passing of his brother. Devastating news, if anybody got that. Also, when I was young, growing up, watched a lot of wrestling when I was growing up, so I wanted to express my deepest condolences to Terry Funk's family, as well as Bray Wyatt, who passed away way too young, suddenly earlier today at the young age of 36. So rest in peace, and deepest condolences to their family, Erwin Arshyster and the rest of them as well. My message to the students who start this September. Most of us know that schools are institutions of learning, that teach students many things. Schools provide a balanced education, which helps in improving the students both physically and mentally grow. Besides academics, there is a wide range of skills learned at Clifton Public Schools, including good behavior, communication skills, responsibility, time management, sports, band, and many other skills. Schools are among the first place we learn new things. It is a place where new friends are made, and those friendships sometimes are carried throughout life. It is hard to imagine a world without schools. And I want to wish all the students enrolling and starting this upcoming academic year, continued success. Thank you, everybody, for your time, and God bless America. Have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Mahia?
To Mr. Santiago, like everyone's saying, I wish you my deepest condolences, and I'm praying for you and your family in this hard time that you're experiencing today. A huge congratulations to our mock trial team, as they'll be attending once again the Yale Competition up in Connecticut. As you guys probably know, I was in mock trial back in high school, and I'm a big supporter of them, especially now that they're going all the way to Chicago for the world championship. So that's another great thing that they're doing now. Congratulations to our band. We were there in the new band turf field, it was amazing. I heard them play, and I'm going to be honest with you, they are 100% better than a lot of universities and colleges, a lot. And I've been to many bands, many stadiums, many fields. Thank you, and hope you guys have a great night.
Thank you. Commissioner Parrish?
Thank you, President Smith. Condolences to the Santiago family on the loss of Commissioner Santiago's brother. I'm going to echo what my colleagues mentioned about the band. We had a ribbon cutting at the field today, the new turf field, which is fantastic facility for the band to practice. But beyond that, I just wanted to make a point of how important music and the arts are in our school district, and that's not the case in many school districts around our county and state. Our music program has been cited for awards three years in a row, I believe, a national award. And this happens from 4th grade, when they start learning instruments, whether they're stringed instruments or band instruments, all the way through to high school. And if they so choose, even beyond high school, our community supports music. We have a community band in town, and many of us play throughout our entire school careers and in our lives. And I just wanted to thank the administration and to thank the school system for keeping music and the arts strong in our town, and I think it helps our students in so many ways. And I just really think we need to acknowledge and appreciate that in our town. To everyone else having another, what, seven days or so left of summer, so to speak, so enjoy your time off and come back ready to work.
Thank you. Vice President, Dr. Danny? Oh, geez, I do it all the time, sorry. Sorry there. Commissioner Abadrabo?
Thanks, President Smith. Prayers go out to Tony and Santiago family. Didn't get your call yet because it's the first day of morning, and hopefully I'll give you a call tomorrow, but prayers go out to you, to you and your family. It's not easy losing anybody in your family, let alone your brother. Today was good. We had, as everybody mentioned, the band ribbon cutting, which was a long time coming. They have a beautiful field that mimics the football field over at the stadium, which is great for them. And it was great because it was also, I believe, the end of their camp where the parents got to join in with their students, next to their students on the field. So it was good to see that. And of course, the Ukrainian flag raising. Everybody knows I always have the Ukrainian flag on my laptop because nobody should be under oppression or aggression in any way. Our thoughts and prayers are with the Ukrainian Americans and Ukrainians, of course. As Commissioner Mahia mentioned, a mock trial kid myself 20-plus years ago. It's great to see to what levels this mock trial team has gone. Congrats and good luck to you guys, Elias, and the team. Congrats to them. Good luck with them. Hopefully, nothing but success. Congrats to the teachers that have attained their masters. That's shown on tonight's agenda. That's an amazing thing, just to show that our teachers, our personnel, our staff are not just stopping at a BA, are not stopping at a certain degree. They're moving forward to better themselves and better our district. The more and better that they improve themselves, they bring more to the classroom, and that's nothing but, you know, great to see. There's a lot going on in the district. As the superintendent mentioned, let's not be keyboard warriors and Facebook warriors. Let's reach out to the administration, reach out to the superintendent, and email away a call away. Let's not believe what certain people are putting out on Facebook and running with it, because honestly, that could be extremely dangerous, extremely dangerous, because that hurts our districts, it hurts our students, and particularly it demeans who we are as a town. One community, one Clifton is definitely the opposite of what certain people are putting on Facebook, and it does not represent. School's two weeks away. Let's start off strong for our students. I urge and I ask you, if you have any questions, if you're unsure of yourself, if you feel out of pocket, ask early in the school year. This way, we can start off strong, start off mentally right, and also being in the right place so you can start off a school year strong. Have a safe and fruitful year. And I want to end off with NJ CUSAC, because congrats to the business office, congrats to our curriculum, congrats to our superintendent. I actually have 10 seconds or 15 seconds. The district I work in, we just went through CUSAC, and it was my first CUSAC, and it's random, and we're in a small district. So for 20-plus buildings that are in Clifton, the only way to prepare for NJ CUSAC is to do your work day to day. It's not like you can gather paperwork or binders or whatever and out of pocket or off a shelf, so you have to be ready for that. And honestly, it's a great feat. It's a great thing. So again, hats off to you guys and gals, and I appreciate you all, and hopefully we can continue moving forward in our awesome district. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President, Dr. Danny?
So first of all, I'd like to start out saying condolences to Anthony Santiago's family. The loss of his brother, I can't even imagine, is having a sibling. I'm sorry for being late. I'm going to kind of keep it short because I don't feel very well, but so I'm not going to repeat a lot of the things already said, so I just want to add two new things that enjoy like the rest of your summer and, you know, enjoy Labor Day, the last of it, you know, rest up. I hope students and staff feel rested for the start of the new year, and happy Rosh Hashanah as when we come back, that holiday will have already passed. So that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I too will be short. I was negligent in my duties to start the meeting off. I should have done this first, but I'd like to welcome our new attorney, Ms. Maggie Miller, representing the Weiner Group. We very much look forward to a great working relationship, and we thank you for being part of our staff. And I wanted to introduce you to the public, and on that same note, to thank Ms. Delise Gutierrez and AGL for the many years that she gave to our district and representing us well. So we thank them, and we very much are grateful and thankful for you. Did you want to say anything?
Thank you for pointing us out.
Just put your mic on.
Sorry. Thank you. Thank you for giving us this opportunity. We look forward to serving you and the community in the best way we can and moving forward. So we're very excited to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome. Yeah, Mr. Santiago called me yesterday to tell me about the passing of his brother. It just amazes me on dedication and how, you know, board members are very dedicated into what they do. And Mr. Santiago had said to me, you know, "I'm not going to be able to attend the meeting because of the death of my brother. However, if you need me because there won't be a quorum, I will come." So I'm very happy that we had a quorum, but to be able to offer that dedication, and I have to thank my fellow board members. Summertime is not a break time for the board. The committees continually meet. Board members are continually doing their work, and I just want to thank the board for all that you do and keeping up with it. The public has to see, and it's because of the public, over two years ago when you came, we came to you and we asked you for your support in passing a referendum where we could upgrade our facilities and give our students items that will benefit their buildings, benefit themselves, and the public joined in and gave us that affirmative vote to go and do that. And now you're really seeing in Clifton the outcome of that vote. If you look at any of our schools, you see construction taking place, and that's because the citizens of Clifton felt it was important to support our schools, our teachers, our staff, our kids, to give them something better. And we talked about today when we went to the dedication or the ribbon cutting of the new band field, and I think back, and Mr. Parrish, I know you were part of the band, think back on just a few years ago of what that band field looked like. It wasn't a field. There wasn't grass. There was dirt, lots of dirt, lots of mud. And our band, as I said today, and as Mr. Mahia just said, you know, they used to be known as the Show Band of the Northeast. Well, we're much bigger than the Northeast, and our band deserved to have a respectful field, and the public agreed to it. The board went out and hired an architect to put those plans, and we accomplished it. The same thing with our tennis courts. I could not believe how embarrassing it was that a high school had tennis courts and a tennis team on the courts that we had. This board and previous board thought it was important, and we went out and were able to do that for our tennis team. I can't begin to talk about the Woodrow Wilson complex, on what a turnaround that complex has become, and how many students will benefit from that new field. They're already benefiting from, almost every day that I pass by there, the kids are on the field, they're playing on the field, and we're hopeful that our electricity is going to be turned on very soon, and that our clubhouse will be functional, the scoreboards will be functional, and that project will be completed. But that's because we care about Clifton kids, and Clifton kids deserve to have these things. Can you imagine some of, if not most of our schools, the bathrooms were over 100 years old? Hadn't been updated in over 100 years. Yes, parts went, but the basics of the bathroom were not changed in over 100 years. I encourage everybody, when these buildings are finished and the bathrooms are open, and I'm sure we'll have some open house, that you go in and see what a difference it's made. So there's a lot of great things happening in the district. Ms. Lama, I don't know how close are they on the elevator?
Oh, they better get it.
So there's just a lot going on in the district, and I hope the citizens see it, are proud of it, and proud of the report that we heard here tonight. That is a tremendous, tremendous accomplishment. And again, as I said before, can't be done alone. So thank you to all parties for making that CUSAC report being so great. Lastly, I'd just like to wish our students, all of our staff, all the very best in starting this new school year. The 2023-24 year may be filled with great success, as I know our staff and all will do all that they can, work hard for Clifton kids, because our kids deserve it. So I wish you all the best. Enjoy whatever week you have left, and we'll see you in September. We have the F-11, F-12, and F-17 for executive session. We have a legal issue for executive session. Action will be taken, so the board will come back out here in public after we're done with executive session. Going to presume that executive session will probably last about an hour, so we'll take a five-minute break before we go. So we're probably talking 10:10 or somewhere around there. We should be back out from executive session. If we should be running any longer, I will update the public, but we hope that we'll be back in about an hour. Okay, so motion to go into executive session.
Mr., I have one more other thing I forgot to mount.
I forgot new business.
It's kind of new business. I need to thank the superintendent for being so diligent about posting something on the website for Clifton Against Substance Abuse Thursday night, 8:31, August 31, at 8 o'clock on the steps of City Hall, is the Overdose Awareness Night, Third Annual. Everybody's invited. Please come, show support to the families that have lost a loved one to a horrendous thing. So 8:31 at 8 o'clock on City Hall property, and join everyone for candlelight vigil. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry, before we go to executive session, I forgot new business. Is there any other new business before the board? All right, seeing none now. Motion to go into executive by Mr. Abadrabo, second by Ms. Basford. Roll call please.
Mr. Abadrabo?
Yes.
Ms. Basford?
Yes.
Mr. Brunsack?
Yes.
Mr. Mahia?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Vice President Danny?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. Okay, yes, if the board could be ready around 9:15 so we could start, please. Thank you.
You sure?
Yeah.
Mr. McConney?
I gotta give an update. Just briefly.
Okay, just to update the public, the board is still in executive session. We estimate another thirty to forty-five minutes in executive session. If it'll be any longer than forty-five, I will come out and update the public at that time. Thank you.
Okay, the board met in executive session. We had contract matters, we had legal matters, special ed matters. So roll call back from executive session.
Mr. Abadraho?
Here.
Ms. Bassford?
Here.
Mr. Bruntzak?
Here.
Mr. Mejia?
Here.
Mr. Paris?
Here.
Dr. Danny?
Here.
President Smith?
Here. We're all still here. Motion please on P, right? P...
F.
F. Eleven, twelve, and seventeen.
Motion.
By Mr. Abadraho. Yeah.
Motion to pull Brian Asylum off F-17.
Thank you. Yeah, and.
Oh, and double A baseball.
Until a CO is.
Pending CO approval.
Hope you got that.
I got it.
All right, Abadraabo was first, who was second?
Second.
Second, Mejia. Roll call please.
Ms. Abadraabo?
Yes, abstaining F-17.
Ms. Basford?
Yes, I'm abstaining on seventeen, four, nine, six, one. Clifton Health Department, I'm in conflict because I volunteer for them and I also volunteer for praise.
Mr. Brunscheck?
Yes.
Mejia?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes, I'm abstaining on forty-nine, fifty-two through fifty-four as I'm a volunteer at the community ban.
Dr. Danny?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. Oh, it was part of facility, it was part of seventeen.
It was community ban.
Yeah, part of seventeen, okay. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
By Mr. Abadraabo.
Aye.
Second by Mr. Mejia, no objection. Thank you all.